Carolyn, Dr. Harris is going to do that.
Okay.
If it is, I'll move to T U.
Oh, the auditor.
We're doing the session.
How many things until like forty-five?
You guys, did you guys come for a visit with us?
Always.
Always.
We just love to see you.
We've got fifteen minutes if you guys have something you want to bring up.
Have you started your meeting?
Yes, we have.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you start.
Yeah. I guess we were just here to see where our third board member nomination might be.
I have one pending approval of her board. Carolyn Dunn is, will probably do it depending on the...
Ruling.
Well, her board members for economic development, their attorney thought it might be a conflict of interest. If he says yes, she has agreed to do it.
Well, we have another one who's agreed to do it and her name's been before the board for three times now and we would like to know, you know, why haven't you gone ahead and appointed her because I think she's a very viable, I think Anna Minnis is a very viable person and I think the community is really respectful of her and I think she's knowledgeable and when she came to, we invited her to come to our last board meeting as a guest and she did and her understanding of the budget as we were talking about it and the financials, she had a good grasp of it and I think that she would have been, and I'm just kind of curious as to why this board decided not to appoint her.
It's really the responsibility of the commissioners to appoint her.
It is and that's why I'm asking why, why when we gave you a viable candidate, you didn't, because there must be something wrong with, the US Commission must have decided that there was something wrong, that she wouldn't be a viable candidate and I'm just...
I think we can do better.
Huh?
I think we can do better.
Mike, do you have, I was hoping to have a...
Executive session?
Executive session to discuss the situation. Maybe five, ten minutes tops.
Can I ask, can I ask if he has a determination of whether it's conflict of interest already?
I, I just texted her right before I got here and she...
She was here, I saw her.
What?
I saw her, she was here.
Carolyn was here.
Uh huh, yeah.
She brought it up to the...
She was sitting over there.
She's downstairs.
Well, I don't think she's had a chance to talk to the economic development attorney yet.
Oh, she was looking for you, I thought.
She sent me an email yesterday, I didn't respond because I wanted to talk to you all before I did that response.
Okay.
So...
Well, we could do that if you think this. I would maybe go into executive session for five minutes for attorney-client privilege.
Second.
So, motion, second to go into executive session for five minutes, on your favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Or we can go back in.
Oh, we'll go back in the session. To answer your question we had, you had earlier, I'm kind of new to the board but it's my understanding, like in my district, I have two board members, Kurt has two board members, Clayton has two board members and it's our responsibility to fill them. Now, I had one open spot in mind where you guys come up with Scott Portmiller and so I felt it was my responsibility to call him and talk to him, I visited with him for a while and he seemed like a very informed person and so then we brought it, you know, bring it to the board and we vote on it. But I do feel like it's, like this spots us up in the Kurt's position, Kurt's district. You know, if you guys make recommendations, Kurt visits with them, if he feels like there's a better candidate, it's basically, since Kurt represents his district, it's his position.
I read that in the bylaws and I understand that and I appreciate your comment, I really do, it's a really good comment. But I, it was my understanding, could I ask Kurt, did you ever talk to Anna?
I...
I mean, we gave her, we gave you the name and the opportunity and I think from what I understood was that you were going to go talk, or you were at least going to talk to Anna and I was just kind of curious, did you ever talk to Anna Minnis?
No.
Did you ever give her a consideration?
Yes.
Is there a reason why that you don't think that she would make a good board member?
I'm not going to get into that, but I did visit with Boyd privately and I think I kind of expressed my opinions to him and he knows the reasons why I have some misgivings about the...
Just so you all know, we did not come up with a name, the name was given to us by St. John's Res. Day, I mean, we didn't sit over there and go, who would, who do we think would be a good board member? So that's where the name came from.
And she was very...
And that's where all the names came from.
And Anna was very willing to serve.
That's where all three names came from.
And I would have appreciated it, if you did talk to Carolyn, that's fine, but it would have been nice if you would have talked to Anna also so you could have gotten an opinion of, a better opinion on, on whether you would want to appoint her or not and I think that's the...
I did talk to some people, but...
But you didn't talk, but you didn't talk to her, right?
I did not talk to her, no.
Now, people...
You think whatever you want, I mean, I talked to her family members, I was...
Could you be more specific?
No.
Okay, appreciate that.
Oh, anyway, I just wanted you to know where the name came from, I mean, that's not like, well, we didn't like so-and-so, we, that's not where, how that happened, so...
Okay. You know, sometimes there are private conversations with individuals or the family members that not everybody's...
Privy to?
Privy to.
People don't like it either.
And, you know, sometimes they ask you to keep stuff, you know...
Well, I know Anna will be very disappointed.
Yeah. How do you think we're going to fill that position today?
I would then, you know, make Carolyn Dunn for Stafford County Hospital Board.
Second.
Motion to appoint Carolyn Dunn to Stafford County Hospital Board, second, on your favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Boyd, let's go to the bar.
No, I'm done with that. If you could call over and give Scott, I mean, Todd or Joe, your mailing address and email address so we can get your packets and why not, we mail out packets before, the weekend before the meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Everything, Julie?
See where the tensions are around here? We'll go into recess.
It's not going to be here.
Couple things about...
Go back in.
Yes.
We had some fires over last weekend, control burns, one was not called in for, so it does not have a burn permit period, an eleven after dark. This is the letter I sent in along with the fine and the response for the vehicles to respond to it, that was sent out Monday.
It got away from you?
No, it was just...
Oh, you just checked it out?
It got called in.
He never called in that it was a fire?
There was a fire called in Friday.
Sorry.
Said he did not have a permit?
Didn't have a burn permit and...
Well, what did you do with said individual?
Huh? I sent him a letter and a, and a fine.
Okay.
According to the resolution.
Just making sure.
It's, it's all right there.
Okay. I don't know, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, and I just basically, basically offered our burn resolution, so I tried to make contact with him, left him voicemails, never heard back, so he didn't make contact with me to discuss it. We did spend quite a bit of time down south at a...
How big of a burn was that?
Eighty acres.
So it went a little pile of limbs in the backyard and he didn't think anybody'd see?
We had, we were down south of Maxville four times, Friday, twice Friday and twice Saturday on a control burn, then we got out of control, burned a bunch of trees and a bunch of neighbors went to go get a dozer, fire a dozer, pushed a bunch of trees, so we were down there in the morning. And then the other thing, I did send Pat Nemec, our part-time guy, would have been Saturday morning at three o'clock in the morning home with the county truck to Grape Bend because he picked up a bunch of parts Saturday, the fire trucks and tires that we had issues with on Friday. So, if anybody questions why the truck was in Grape Bend at three o'clock in the morning, you guys are...
You have a question, of course.
Are aware of why it was.
Yeah.
I do know that it has a GPS, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, that's why it was.
As long as it's been used for county, you know, county purpose like that, I have no problem with it.
So, but, like I said, I just wanted to have you guys on that stuff.
It says you did respond to it, you just going to check it out?
No, it was paged out as a fire because it was two people.
You didn't have to put out a fire.
We drove the perimeter and put out a couple hot spots, I mean, it was still burning, no one was around, so...
But if you'd have called it in, then how many people showed up?
Well, there were three trucks and seven or eight people.
Yeah, because he didn't want to make the phone call, seven people have to take time out of the day around out there.
And then he...
No. Really. He shouldn't have been there.
Yeah, so, and like I said, I, I tried to make contact twice, left him voicemails and never heard him back, so...
I'm sure I'll hear from him.
Probably so, but like I said, I just figured I would update you guys on that, so...
Yeah, you should know better than that.
That's all I can do for you now.
Air tanks?
We're in the process of having, we took the first set in, they're testing them this week, so they'll be done, probably pick them up next week and drop the other thirty off. So, and then we'll be back in a rotation and up on them.
So you said your tinder truck had a little electrical problem, will you guys have, somebody come down and take a look at it, since it's kind of the peak of the burning season?
We're working on it right now.
Okay.
That's actually what Pat's doing today, he's working on that truck, trying to clear out what the issue is with it.
Okay.
We had also, one other thing, I guess, we had talked about that trailer with the twenty-two-hundred gallon tank, I think we're going to, once we get that together, we're going to take it to Maxville so they have an additional twenty-two hundred gallons of water on hand and they can put it in their station, talk to Gary about it, we're going to try that out, they've got a truck that they can pull it, see and drop it and then, because they don't have a tinder in, in Maxville, so it would give an additional twenty-two hundred gallons of water.
Okay. Sounds good.
I think that's it.
So everyone's got their turnout gear, I know one expressed his gratitude because what he had been wearing, he has a thirty-eighth waist and what he'd been wearing was a thirty-sixth, so he was appreciative of the new gear.
Yep, we're still, we still have a few newer people that we have to purchase while we're on the board, but that's seventeen, fourteen hundred dollars, these, so, stuff that we're still trying to get caught up on, but that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. This is not Amy.
Who knows?
I'm Marissa, but I'll be speaking on behalf of Amy for the Community Corrections and then myself with Juvenile Services, so, I will start with Juvenile Services since, well, that's, that's my, my first bill house. So, we are going around because it's that time of year for our state block grants and so I have two block grants as well as Amy does and so the first one right there, this is the FY twenty twenty block grant and under Juvenile Services, we are chartered with five core programs to operate for our district. So the first and foremost is intake and assessment and that's twenty-four-seven in partnership with our law enforcement. We average about five hundred and eighteen to five hundred and fifty youth a year that we process through intake and assessment. Since the reform, one of the big pieces is, I've really tried to get up to every single law enforcement entity at least once a quarter. I don't say this just because they're in the room, but Stafford County is probably by far the best, I've been here twice if not three times to continue to educate and let them know with the reform what we can and cannot do and it's just appreciative so that we can have that relationship and that, I'm not trying to hamstring them, I'm not trying to do things that hinder the process, but with the reform, you know, our hands are tied and so having that relationship and being able to communicate with them of what we can and what cannot do is helpful. And then Fisher, sort of on my advisory board as you see on, on one of their pages there and so he's that advocate for me from the law enforcement perspective. The other thing with intake and assessment that we have incorporated is, and I know that you guys hear as well, is we have the electronic monitoring that we can utilize as an alternative to detention and so if we have somebody that's on that gray area of being able to detain and you have that concern for community safety, we would have those devices that we can use. We purchased six of them and right now we have two of them in use, so, but that's as far as intake and assessment.
Of the five hundred, how many come out of Stafford County?
You know, I was trying to get my data together for that, but believe it or not, our biggest counties are Barton, Stafford and Rice, so as far as volume, so, you know, what, a lot what we see in Stafford is a lot of your misdemeanor, either truant or runaway, we even had, we even had four runaways from our state this last year, you know, so those are always barriers again when you're talking about intake and assessment because then when there are runaways from another state, we have to follow then state and federal guidelines as to what to do with them and our federal policy is that they are detained until that state can come get them and so you guys will probably see that through your billing when you see youth in the detention center, but, you know, it's a process and we have to wait for that state to kind of get them, so...
But on truancy?
No.
There's nothing to do?
No, and, you know...
Is it project stay that went away? I mean, there's really nothing to do with truancy.
We, we don't have funding for project stay, that is true, that does not come out of our core program, but what we have incorporated because we know truancy is, you know, we always say it's that red blinking light that we know there's a problem and we know that there's concern because of, my, my belief is if kids aren't in school where they need to be, you know, my brain goes to the worst, are they breaking into houses, are they stealing cars, are they doing things they shouldn't be doing and so what we've been doing is with the county attorney's office is like a ninety-day supervision, you know, let's get in, let's assess, what are really the issues, is it a medication issue, is it a parenting issue, what are, are there bigger issues or is it just that oversight of, oh, somebody is going to really pay attention to make sure I get there? And some of them work well, some of them don't, but then we refer back and give full report back to the county attorney of, here's what's really going on and maybe you better involve DCF because this is going to go bad really quick. But no, we as Juvenile Services being under the Department of Corrections, we do not receive those funds to work with the truant population, but because I know it's a need, I usually do it under our intake and assessment program because we can do, like we've set up, the ninety-day follow-up and so that's how we've been addressing that need for our, our district.
Well, I started a couple years ago, the schools were very, hey, are you going to file these cases and so, you know, I can file them till them blew in the face, but if nothing gets done about them, you know, and, and I like my Daniel.
Yeah.
I like him as a person, I hang out with him, but, you know...
Our hands are tied.
If nothing's going to be done, there's no point in me wasting paper.
Right, and that's why you were doing the pre-file, go file, just send it over, let's see what we can get done.
You know, I just want to make sure...
And then that way we can truly identify if you do need to file that case, so, because I think the last that you did, they were pre-file and I think all but two...
Well, like you said, the other option is if it's more parenting, it's a big on the same case.
Right.
But, you know, my concern is just with project stay being gone.
Yeah.
We've got to have a, a new plan, I don't know what that plan's going to be and...
It's the pre-filing of it so that way we can get in, so you don't have to file before, let's get in and assess and identify, you know, let's put a cognitive intervention in and really get the opportunity and that's another thing with the schools, you know, the schools are really good with us to be able to meet with the youth and to provide that service in the school setting because again, the schools want that help as well, you know, they don't, they want the kids to be present and intentionally learning, not disruptive to others or even their own process, so another very positive piece for us, our working relationships in Stafford.
Are you, excuse me?
Yeah.
I'm on the subject of truancy, are you familiar with the project they had down Liberal a couple of years ago? And this was all about truancy and they hired an ex-military guy and they even had classes with parents, they made certain the kid was in school and so on and so forth and I was wondering if that was, that must have been a local funding project.
I had not heard of it, but I can reach out and see what their number was like.
Well, CJ Weston was one, presented one of our conferences and they went through and they, at Liberal, the school system down there was having a big problem with truancy.
Do you know, like, does either, I started at the elementary, middle or high school, who would I be able to make contact with?
I think it was...
It's a high school. I mean, they probably included them all, but...
I think they started in the high school because their attendance rate was terrible and I'm wondering if that was probably from local funding.
But, I mean, we have flexibility, I mean, we can definitely look into it.
Three, four years ago?
Yeah.
Probably four years ago.
Okay, no, I'll look into that.
I know one thing that, I've had a lot of superintendents and stuff say, you know, that's a problem, they'd like to have some teeth into it that they can actually do something.
And it's one of those things because truancy is a status offense and it's really under the Child in Need of Care Code, you know, like he says, you know, the next step is to file that Child in Need of Care, but if we can at least go into that process of the intake and assessment and at least do that ninety-day intervention and be able to identify, you know, when he does file his case of this is parenting, so we need to make sure that DCF and the St. Francis Ministry, the people that are serving that Child in Need of Care population know what they're needing to do for services and interventions.
But the flip side is if it's not a parenting issue, if it's just a renegade child who isn't going to school like he's supposed to.
Yeah.
If we get back to the teeth thing, what, what can we do to...
And right now, there's really nothing you can do?
Just trying to create a...
I'm frustrated, frustrated beyond belief.
Is this something...
Poor Mike thinks I, you know, but I don't, it's just...
Well, isn't it the commissioner's responsibility on truancy or not?
No, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, it was like just him whether, you know, to work with us or provide...
With project stay not being funded and we're just going to have to figure out...
How do you label, or how does the label get on a kid that he's a child in need of care, I mean, who decides that it's a parenting issue?
Me, at the end of the day, at the bottom line. The, the statute has about eight criteria and typically it's abuse or neglect or stuff like that, but one of the criteria is truancy and that's five days of, you know, unexcused absences and, you know, the schools, to their credit, have been very good about letting me know when kids are, you know, and then like she said, we file the intervention and try to, but if it's not a parenting issue and we don't, I mean, I, I go ahead and file a same case because it's, it's not a parenting issue, but it's still a truancy issue, you got to do it, you know, it's law, but then what do we do with the child? That's the frustrating part, you know, everything I've described up to this point, that's easy, it's what do we do with this child that just says, I'm not getting out of bed or I'm not going to school or I'm going to be a pain while I'm there, you know, that's the child that is the issue.
It's probably a combination of both of the two.
Probably, probably, but...
And again, you know, the last five, three, we were able to get in and make a difference, it was the other two that needed filing, so, you know, that's a pretty good ratio, it's just those, usually those two, that's the pebble in your shoe, you know, and you feel it.
It's the boulder in your shoe.
You know, you feel it and it's just like, ah, what am I doing, what are we doing, how can we get ahead of this, you know, so, that, that, those are the hard ones. The next piece is the immediate intervention program and that is new with the juvenile reform, so we are really only in year two. The piece I wanted to point out for you guys is, like, back on, it's page thirty-two at the bottom and it's just the data and so for us in the twentieth, we had fifty-one total discharge with forty-four being successful, seven being unsuccessful, so we're at an eighty-six percent rate of successful with those interventions, which means in the last six, six months, twelve months, those youth have remained successful and they have not committed new crimes and so again, we're targeting the right population of those first-time offenders and truly giving them that due diligence and, and again, Mike is really good about giving us that opportunity for this population to get in and give it a try, you know, and if we are not able to modify their thinking errors or pull something that's going to, we're going to see a changed behavior, he, he will file on it and we appreciate that support because that's what we say, you know, this is an opportunity for you, otherwise the county attorneys will be forced to file, so we certainly appreciate when they do what we say is going to happen, so that is certainly appreciated. The one thing that I want to make note of is this year for the Department of Corrections, Juvenile Services, is I had to quantify with a percentage of what we would increase by eighty-six percent by and at a minimum I had to say two percent and I did go with two percent and the reason being is because they're youth, they're unpredictable, their young brains are still learning and growing and, and then just for transparency, because I see how it works in the adult system and when I get to Amy's comprehensive plan, if you don't meet that, you lose funding and so then it's like, you put it out there that, okay, we're going to do better, but then you're working with the unpredictable population and then you get cut and you don't get the increased funding to continue the work that needs to be done, so that is certainly a fear that I have and so I did just go modestly two percent on that. Our next, our third program that we were mandated to provide is intensive supervised probation and so those would be the cases that are filed and then meet the scoring criteria per the new youth assessment, which is called the Youth Level of Services Case Management Inventory, it's kind of like, I guess, a pre-sentence investigation, but even before that, because are you going to go on court services probation or are you going to go on ours, which is intensive? And then per the mandates, we only supervise the very high and high offender youth and that's because we can offer surveillance, the additional electronic monitoring, checking your homes, checking your schools and all those other levels of supervision. The fourth piece under that is case management and B, that is the fading away population because those case management kids, those were the population that used to go out of home as offenders and because under the reform, that no longer exists and so unless they're going to meet the criteria for a correctional facility and our district only has one with them, a correctional facility right now, so, and again, back to that page with the graphs, they've done that now also with our probation and for your guys' information, we had a total of twenty complete in the last six months and fourteen were successful, six were unsuccessful and so that gave us a seventy percent successfully.
So when you say unsuccessful, you mean they broke the probation?
They broke the probation, you know, just to give you an example, we just had three unsuccessful and it's probably giving me great hair as I sit here, but, you know, it's just that piece of, two of them had skandied and caught new charges in the state that they ran away to and then one was just completely unamiable for probation, refused to sign the contract, refused to even try to meet with us and so we have to count this as unsuccessful because they didn't even attempt to meet the, meet the expectations of being ordered to probation, so again, now DOC is quantifying that for us and so I have to say a two percent increase from the seventy percent. So, you know, I'm asking myself, even with those last three and even these seven, oh wait, make sure I'm right, six, that were unsuccessful, what else could we have done? Could we have done anything else to make them successful, just like the three that I just mentioned, what else could we have done to make them successful, you know? The one was a boyfriend-girlfriend situation, you know, and, you know, we tried to remove some of those barriers because I feel like the girl had an opportunity to be successful if she could get away, but when they had skanned, our hands are tied, so. The last mandated program that we are required to provide is going to be our prevention efforts and that's really everything, cognitive interventions that we provide for the truant youth to the offender population. youth to the offender population across the board. And so for us, and FYI, this last year that we just finished, they break it down into like maybe an at-risk population, like the truancy, those were those fall under because they haven't committed a crime. And then they break it down into tertiary, which means they have committed a crime. And so for us, we had a total of 191 youth under the secondary prevention and 135 actual offenders we served. And so again, just putting a number to those youth, we're gonna continue looking at programming and other options. And so that's the state block grant. And then one of the, the next program that I have is then with our dollars of the state that have been recouped, is the word, I guess I'll use, the savings from those offender populations not going out of home. So for juvenile services, Department of Corrections gives you an allocation and says, here's your dollar, what do you wanna do with it? And that's kind of what they do even with our state block grant. And so for us, what I wrote, our reinvestment dollars is kinda like what you guys were talking about on that parenting piece and trying to get the parents to identify and help their youth. I wrote mine for two positions and they're called family engagement advocates. And so trying to get into those families and parents sooner. And the, another district that has this program, they are in their third cycle of class and their last cycle that graduated, they graduated 19 or 20 parents. So we've gone down to do field trips to try to figure out what they're doing to get those parents there, whether it's court referred, whether it's mental health referred, school referred, whatnot, but they've got buy-in and they have parents coming to the table. So we're getting ready to launch that and saturate the schools and the courts and everybody. So that way we can look at that same success here. Because sometimes when you're talking about parenting, you don't know what you don't know. And if you have that generational level of parenting errors and whatnot, then you gotta take a step back and give them some new skills. And so that's what I'm really excited about, the parenting project. And so we actually received funding in October and it's a two-year grant cycle and so they're asking that I go ahead and submit this again for this year. So, but I'm really excited about it. Our training for this will be at the end of July and then again in September. But like I said, the district that is already providing it, they've already seen probably the best result of any parenting curriculum I've seen in a really long time. I can't remember the last time I had my parents show up for something. It's very heavily incentive based and so I don't know if that's part of that care or if it is court refer, you know, referred or school or just those parents that really want help. So, so yeah, those are the ones I'm here for, for juvenile services. Are there any questions I can help answer? As far as our budget, just so you know, our budget, it is the same as it has been for the last three years. So we're at $635,847.82. And then that reinvestment grant is $128,251.09. I know that was a lot. Any questions? Are we ever free that or?
It's probably a little too early, but I was just wondering if, if you've seen, you know, the Circles organization?
Yes.
Has any impact?
Yes. We're really helpful. I, I am a part of the Circles program and I really like seeing the outcome it's had for the youth and families that are trying to come up out of poverty. I think Great Bend is on their third class and so I know just my lens only because my circle leader is from the first graduating class. And so that first graduating class was smaller and then the second group was bigger and now this group. But I, I think that there is that fairness of keeping that smaller class because that group is really close and really has a firm foundation of success and what they wanna achieve for themselves. I see that with that first group. That second group was a bigger group and has a lot going on. And then there is the third group right now. I really like the program, so I can't say enough about it.
See in Stafford County, we have two groups, one in Stafford and one here in St. John.
And are you guys seeing some positive results from it?
I, I'm impressed.
Good. Yeah, it's amazing.
And I'm also impressed with the little kids.
Yeah.
Cause the little kids are polite and if they're not polite, they're corrected on the spot.
And that goes back to you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
And, you know, them coming to the table means that they're willing to recognize and make some changes to how they've, they've done their whole prior life. And that's hard because you're changing those values.
Right.
And beliefs and stuff. But no, it's an amazing program.
Okay. I just wondered if we've seen any?
I think we still have some work to do because, you know, we, our, our poverty levels are pretty high for our district and that's in every county, not any one that stands apart. And as long as we keep having the conversation and making that awareness known, that gets us ahead every day.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So in your program, do you provide referrals either to a Circles program or any other thing that you might see helping them move out? Okay, so for example, we're doing some employment programs that are grant funded and in part we're needing to illustrate that we're moving more poverty based than it is like infraction based or something like that, but would your organization serve as a source of referrals to?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you have your card?
Of course I do.
Oh, okay. Well, okay. All right.
Do you have one?
I do, I do. I'll get you my card. Yeah, that would be great, you know, and that's part of the, you know, just having the conversation and letting parents know that there is ever options available. And then that's where even for the youth and the adult, you know, we really work closely with our Kansas Works to try, you know, Kansas Works. I have one gentleman there and I know Amy has tons, but they helped him with mock interviews, you know, those, those load-bearing social skills of let's brush your teeth, let's comb your hair, let's button up and let's, you know, they practiced those things with him. And so then when he came in for his next office visit with me, he was like, can I practice? You bet, you know? So I mean, he's hearing the message and he's getting it. So that's exciting when those things happen. So, and actually that's why Amy couldn't be here is because one of their probationers that had successfully completed probation, but then also is a part of the Circles program, was giving his, I'll use the word, testimony at the Bridges to Resilience Training Conference in Aleka. And so she wanted to support him. And I, cause you know, we went back and forth and I was like, you have to support him, you know, so he knows that, that effort of, of your hard work, you know? And that's that piece of even that modeling for our probationers and our families that we see your hard work that you're putting in. You just gotta keep going every day. Every day is hard work because that's called adulting, you know? And, and you don't get to quit or, you know, you can have a bad day, but you don't get to quit. So, thank you for that question. Amy will be sad that she missed it. I do need the chair for, to support to submit my state block grant for juvenile services.
Make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the letter of agreement through, what's it called?
State block grant.
State block grant.
Go to motion.
Set.
Go to motion to second for, to allow me to sign the state block grant. Hold the paper.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. And you guys can keep those or I'll recycle if you want, your choice. Do you need a copy?
Now you're putting on a different hat.
Okay. So we'll move to Amy's. See how thick Amy's is? See how not thick mine is? That, that's the part that gives those gray hairs poking through. Okay, so for Amy's, hers is broken down into sections as well. The first thing she wanted me to go ahead and identify for you is that her comprehensive plan is at the request of $486,42, or eight, $486,42.04. For Amy, this is an $11,000 in reduction from last year, even though their caseloads have seen an increase. Because I've been around with her, speaking continued through to the commission, their average daily population is almost at 300. And granted, that includes those that are, you know, doing 120, 20, you know, the sanctions or in jail or in treatment or whatnot, but still at that very high threshold. And so one of the things that she mentions is this goes based on one of their outcomes and their outcome says that they'll remain at 25% not being incarcerated. And when she got her data, they were at 26. So, you know, so I hear her and I see her stats and so then when I have to quantify mine, there's that uncomfortable feeling of, you know, what is the Department of Corrections thinking, you know, are we not going on caseloads and instead we're going on a percentage of, again, those being incarcerated when you're talking youth that are, or not youth, but adults that are engaging in criminal behavior, it doesn't always seem quite just. Some of the challenges she mentions is, you know, just, and again, this goes for both agencies, is, you know, we've had change in prosecutors for changes in judges just in the last two years. And so that's not part of just having those ongoing conversations of, hey, these are our outcomes and how can we help meet them and what can I do, you know, what can we do prior to, you know? And those are just the, that, those are just the lumps that we're dealt with and it does make it a challenge and a barrier for us when we're looking at those outcomes. She does want me to make sure you guys know that we do have good representation for Advisory Board. She has Shannon Snyder of the Health Department representing Stafford County and so she said that's full and good to go. She said the other piece was that when she's looking at her upcoming year as far as what she needs to do and what that's gonna look like, the Department of Corrections for the adult, they recently put out a whole new set of policies and procedures and so they're really going to be focused on updating those as well as making sure that models then with everything we do in the cognitive-based world to include ethics, motivational interviewing or, I know the adult, they use that, and I don't think it's the curriculum from Circles, but it's the, it's another piece of it. It's called Getting Ahead in a Just Getting By World. And so she's incorporated that into her program because, you know, the Circles, it only, it has only so many slots it can fill and so she's got this level of audience from the offender perspective. And seen some good results from that as well. And so how she does that for her incentives is, okay, this takes off your UAF fees or this can take off, you know, community service if you come attend these classes. And so I thought that was pretty creative incentive and something that we're gonna try to write policy on for the juvenile world to, as well, to get those parents there for that parenting piece. Just don't wanna miss anything here.
What's the new industry here? I see in Russell.
Oh, yes. Good question. It is called mechanized concepts. And so we have had conversations about that because, you know, for Russell, that would be good for industry and jobs, but is it gonna come too fast that they don't have enough housing, they don't have enough, you know, ever needs to, to meet that? So because I believe they're wanting 150 positions by May and then, you know, I mean, totally 900 new positions. So mechanized concepts is gonna be kind of like an implement to help cut hem. So, but it'll be the implement, they'll be building the implements there. It seems very competitive as far as the cost of wages and the positions are vary from entry level to engineer. So, I don't know if she included a flyer for it. It might have been in her bag.
I just find it amazing that they could have 900 jobs in a town of 4,500 people.
I know. And it's gonna be fast. I mean, that's, you know, just considering a couple of weekends ago or was it just last weekend? You know, because right now the hotel industry is already full from the pipeline workers, you know? And so when you have that many more positions coming in, I don't think that the housing market will be able to support it.
I can't see that either.
You know? But it, it causes concern for us and things that we wanna be prepared for. Yeah. She does mention there at the bottom of it, you know, just as far as continued education of why unsuccessful closures and just those adverse childhood experiences and the facts that they truly have, you know, so toxic stress, poverty, you know, items that we've been talking about. Because those do have, they take a toll on it, you know? And, you know, Amy and I together, you know, we always think that if we can start this at those younger ages, then maybe they wouldn't cross over, you know? And then even on the same breadth of that, then I'm just like, those three cases that I just had, I'm just like, I have to just slide them on over because we didn't make the changes necessary into the juvenile world and I feel like I'm probably doing the adult world. She said good for. For Advisory Board, goals are just updating the standards to the evidence-based programs, continue to keep the stakeholders advised. And then, you know, I, I think her biggest concern behind that third is that her budget and the mass majority of her budget goes to personnel, just leaving 11,000 for operating expenses. And so I know that's caused some concern for her and so one of the things, like when she comes back around in October to get permission for the carryover muddies that we get from reimbursements and whatnot, she's gonna offset any operation, operational expenses with those dollars is her plan. Any questions on her comprehensive plan?
If your population hasn't changed dramatically, why is your, why are you down to 11,000?
Why has she cut the funds? She advised that the Department of Corrections goes on the funding formula and then the outcomes. And so because she didn't meet the outcome of the incarceration, but, you know, for me, if it's 25 and you're at 26, you serious? Can't throw a bone? But I know that I'm pretty neutral about it because it's not me and if Amy was here in person, it would be a little feistier. And, you know, Amy and I have talked about it and I, I told Amy and I think she, I know she did, she sent a rather pointed email to Department of Corrections asking just that and they've never responded, especially because her population is growing.
And because they don't have to.
Right. So.
You kinda have to look at the deal where your chair has to be some magic number. So if you do 25 and you let 26 go by, wouldn't 27 be all right?
Yeah, probably so, but I mean, 26, I mean, you're talking one person.
I was gonna say, there's from 25 and 26 is how many people?
Right, right.
I mean, one more person, two more people, whatever, you know? The small.
She mentioned that last time she was here. She was a bit under.
Yeah. Well, and she's already done. Well, and she's already done her data and whatnot for the last quarter, and she's at thirty-two percent. So. And I told her, I was like, you just have to keep being diligent and asking those questions and be very pointed that this isn't okay, and that you need to have more than eleven thousand just to keep the lights on. You know, because we still have to do training that is mandated. We still have to travel to our outline counties, and that requires fuel, and you know, gotta have paper. You know, and so she just needs to be diligent on that. So, so that's the comprehensive plan. The second one is the smaller one. Did I talk about?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, did I talk to everybody? Okay, there you go. The smaller one is her behavioral health monies. And so she has wrote for twenty-nine thousand six sixty-seven thirty. And so what she's asking to do with her behavioral health dollars is she actually coordinates and shares a person with our local health department. And this person comes in and does some of that programming for her. Because, you know, her and all of the staff are doing full-time probation duties. And so this is allowed a little bit of breath. And so this person does the SAP classes, the getting, getting by, or getting ahead in a just getting by world. And so one of the things that Amy stated was she can ask for a certain amount, it's not like ours with the allocations. And so she's not even a hundred percent certain that she'll get the full twenty-nine thousand. And so if that changes, then she will probably let you guys know and how she adjusts that within her budget. You know, but one of the things that she was able to do for this was to put some of those services such as the mental health for our consumers, the substance abuse, the sex abuse surveys. And the other thing that she does with some of these service dollars for the clients is those clients that are going straight from their prison sanction and then going into the Oxford houses, they usually can pay the rent, the first couple of weeks' rent while they're getting out, getting acclimated, and getting their job. So a pretty creative use of those funds. And then to also ensure a little bit more success for that population coming straight from the prison and then into a structured setting. So, and she had shared with the last set of commissioners that they're actually getting ready to open a fourth house in Great Bend. So, a really big Oxford presence promoting recovery. And I think that's, that's a really identified need in our district. So, it's recovery. Any questions on that? On her behavioral health dollars? The other thing, I guess here on this third page back, she does mention she has a community outreach. And, and her name is Yolanda. And so Yolanda then does some of that work with the adult offenders, taking them over to Kansas Works, saying, this is where you need to go. The other thing Yolanda does is help get those documents back, such as driver's license, social security, birth certificate. It really is, she said it, and it's one of those amazing things, she's right. Whenever kids or adults go back from the run and jail and whatnot, they have none of that. It's lost, so you gotta start all over again. And so Yolanda has literally loaded, you know, three or four people up in a vehicle down to Hayes to get social security cards, you know, at least that we used out on the same day. But it's what we need to do to get them the jobs to be able to get back up on their feet. So, that would be another use of those dollars on the behavioral health. Any questions on that? Okay, then I would just mute the same motion. She has two, her state block grant and then the behavioral health.
Will we allow the chairman to sign for the state block grant, the behavioral health?
Second.
Motion, the second, to allow the chairman to sign the behavioral block grant and behavioral health, full paper.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
You know, just listening to all this, I just got instant fatigue.
I know, I know.
I know, it's so frustrating. I mean.
It is. And, you know, we're I guess, you know, my mind goes to a couple of different things. So, you know, I know that there's supposed to be thirty million dollars in the lockbox from the juvenile savings. You know, is that lockbox gonna get pried open? Are those dollars gonna trickle back out to? Because, you know, I've listened to some of the governor's commentary of wanting to strengthen back the pay for the prison, and, you know, just in light of some of their riots and whatnot. And so it's just a matter of, will it trickle down to the local? Any, or is it all gonna remain higher up? But I do know, just in conversations at the juvenile level, if they don't recognize, if they don't identify a need for those dollars, somebody will take it. And that's just the way it is. So.
But is it, all the prisons are beyond capacity?
They're full.
All the jails are full? Juvenile detention centers are?
They're not full.
They're not full? Because they're too expensive?
No, because of the reform. I mean, unless you're Charles Manson's little brother.
You're not going.
Yeah, they're not going.
We have a, and that's one of the things we train our law enforcement. If you don't meet that criteria, they're not gonna accept you.
That's a tough criteria to get there.
But isn't that the time to nip it in the bud?
Preach to the choir.
You know, we go to these meetings, and they talk about truancy, and they, they go back and they look, you know, of attendance in school at the, I forget, now, third or sixth grade or something. And that carries into employment. When they look at the time cards, they, they're not there.
Same, they have the same attitude, and it carries.
And it carries forward.
Yeah.
I think it starts when they're three or four years old.
At least. Because what was it, the lizard brain, remember that?
Yeah, from trauma-informed.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're, well, because your brain grows from the stem to the front, and so you've really gotta catch it here in the midst before it gets to here because this is gonna be your rational thinking. And because it's the last to develop till you're twenty-five, and so it hens your impulsivity of kids. You know, and then if you don't have rules associated with that from parents, or guidelines, or structure, you know. Yeah.
Like a juvenile marijuana.
Yeah, I was gonna say the juuling is rampant, you know, rampant. And then I guess the scary thing for that is, you know, there, there's just not enough evidence or research of how harmful that's truly gonna be for kids. And I have great concerns for their health and wellbeing in the future. So. I know. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I have a current meeting downstairs. I'm looking with, if you need something.
Thank you.
No. It's Faye's, it's Faye's, Faye's replacement.
You're out.
Or Faye's right hand, what is it?
How are you today?
Good.
Little background here. Good thing you named, I'm sorry, Bob. Doesn't matter, Great Plains. Bob and Faye. And again, my name is Bob, what more, Great Plains development from Dodge. And in many ways, I'm talking to the choir here, because you know exactly what we do. I'll bring you up to date here on some of the things we're doing and kinda give you a heads up on a couple of things. There's a summary sheet in here, and like I always say, I'm not gonna need a word for it, but this Buck summary sheet, you can kinda summarize what we're doing. You all know we wear a grant hat and a loan hat. And then half of what we do are those CBG grants that are available. And usually, the communities don't qualify numbers-wise for that low to moderate income. And within the last month, we got brand-new numbers from the State of Conference, or the Commerce Department.
Okay.
And we have communities that qualify.
In Stafford County?
Yes, ma'am. So the good news is Hudson is over with fifty-one percent. Maxville is over with fifty-eight percent. And Stafford is over with fifty-one point nine.
But not St. John, which is the one that's positioned.
St. John is not.
They're the one that took Congress this week.
In fact, there's, there's new numbers, you can keep those, that's the whole state. But the really good news is, for at least two years here, all these communities can apply. And
Interesting.
Yeah. Those new numbers make a big difference. Because what that means is we don't have to survey, we don't have to go through that big first step that, that you're aware of to get there.
Do we have numbers on St. John, too? Like, how close?
St. John is forty. So you're allowed to survey because it's above that thirty-five, I think. So, you're allowed to survey, but St. John.
And the numbers that we surveyed in our sidewalk grant of, what was that, two thousand? They don't count.
You'd have to do it again.
They don't count until the new census?
No, and even worse, anything we survey now, they're putting a one-year cutoff on it. So if we survey now, it's only good for a year. It used to be good till the next census.
But it's because we're in twenty nineteen, I suppose?
Yep, we should have new numbers twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. And for the first time in history, as Faye said, we got new numbers. They've never done that before. And the reason why is they're changing, HUD is changing the way they do the numbers with the census now. So, for the first time ever, Faye came back from a training session with new number. Now, that means we have about a two-year window here where we could do something. St. John.
So St. John's in particular interested in Fifth Street and being able to pave that.
And what we're recommending, Faye and I talked about this, since we may get new numbers in twenty twenty-one, it may be worth it just to wait that extra year.
But that would actually be?
To see what happens.
Three years of waiting for an actual street?
Maybe. It doesn't mean you can't do it, but if it's a through street that everybody travels, then we'll have to do the whole, we'd have to find fifty-one percent of thirteen hundred, maybe. So we'd need, what, twelve hundred? Thirteen hundred? Fifty-one percent or above survey.
Six hundred surveys that show that you are, we have to show six hundred people completed a survey.
You're absolutely right.
That establishes that they are sufficiently loaded.
Not impossible. And it's only good for a year, which is a bummer, because then we could, we could have surveyed and had it good for two or three years normally. And that's because they're changing all there. We don't know why yet.
How did they come up with the new numbers?
Part of it, how did they come up with these numbers? It's, it's not a mystery, I joke that it's a mystery. But what they do is their HUD, HUD takes the census numbers and applies formulas to that based on surveys that HUD does nationwide. So HUD takes census numbers, they don't believe it, so they come up with their own. So these are.
Those are HUD numbers?
Yep, their census numbers sourced, and then they apply their own statistics to it. So, when you look at this new list, you'll see population numbers that don't make sense at all. Because they make up the because we had some that were low to moderate income, and now they're like, no, not even twenty percent is low to moderate. Well, that's wrong. Then you look at the census numbers and you realize they've probably got twenty-five percent more people than even exist in the town. But you can't, unless you survey, you can't retrieve the numbers, so.
So it's harder than you think.
It is, it is.
That stretch of sidewalk on First Street in St. John, we surveyed everyone. Like, we went door to door and helped.
They did a lot of work getting that.
And you would think that corridor would be very easy to show that fifty-one percent of the residents there, you know, you've got Cherry Lane, you've got a retirement facility. I would tell people, this is asking not what you made me, you were working full-time, but what you're making right now, right? And it was by the skin of our teeth, like, by, like, two people that we met the threshold of showing. It was whatever, it was like a hundred people or something.
You worked really hard right at the end just to get past that. I remember Faye saying it was hard.
Was.
I would think Kim would have helped you a lot.
We surveyed every single person, and we got a survey from every single person in Kim. And we got a survey from every single person that lives in Cherry Lane. And people all along, I don't think there was really any household that we didn't survey, which is all the more surprising if you look at that corridor, that it wasn't easily over a fifty-one percent threshold. But it wasn't easy.
And they had to be right on First Street then?
For that one, because we defined the beneficiaries of that improvement as being specifically those adjacent to it, and it wasn't the whole town, we were able to define a certain area as a district that had to meet the low-income threshold.
She's absolutely, absolutely right, we call that targeted beneficiary.
So will Fifth Street be the whole town then? Well, you're the
Good question.
Well, no, I think you're saying it would probably have to be the whole. And the other thing is that there aren't enough residents on that street.
That's what I want.
To, because there's, there's a formula of you get funding, like, whatever, I'll make up a number, twenty thousand per beneficiary or something like that. So on First Street, there were enough residents.
But on Fifth, there aren't that?
To, you know, like justify the level of loan requests to do the improvement we were talking about. There's not that many people that live on Fifth Street, so.
So you see how it's harder than it sounds. Sometimes if they're already qualified, then you go to the next step of what's the project and how you do it. But to get to that point is all this work if it doesn't meet the low to moderate income. By the way, that threshold is not very high. That's also part of the issue is.
To be low-income, you have to be really low-income.
Really low, yeah, I'd like to see the numbers. And it's household, not individual. So if you have multiple people, yeah, it's household, it makes it harder. So it makes it harder to find a household. Because if two people are gainfully employed, they're over. If husband and wife both work full-time, or you have a dependent child that's working, or you have a relative living in the household, a immediate relative that's working. So it makes it harder. So that's why we get excited when they pop over, because it's like, okay, that part, we're done. The next challenge, just so you know, is you only have to have a twenty-five percent local match for Commerce to submit the app. But we know if you don't do fifty, you can't really compete with the other people because it's a competition, and you get points for local match. And I'll give you an example, you may have heard of Pre Prairie not getting a recent.
Yes.
Okay, you saw that, okay. There was only one community that got it. The three of the communities didn't get it, one did. The three that didn't, didn't go through us, the one that did went through us. Because we said to them, if you don't do fifty percent local match, you won't get it. The other ones didn't, they only did twenty-five percent. And I don't know for sure, you, you don't know, because it's a point-based system, but we do know you get more points for that. It makes a difference. When you're competing, when you're doing something like a Carter project, you kinda get bonus points for that. So, keeping all those things in mind, and the reason I keep looking at Karen is because we're gonna face making contacts, and we'll follow your lead. If we could get Maxville to even consider, if they're doing something, the point is, if they're doing something, if they're doing something, you might as well apply, the only thing that can happen is.
Having a, is there any? Having it, is there any benefit to having a higher LMI number than your threshold, your threshold?
You're over, you're over. If you're over, you're over. And it's just the 51%.
Which is crazy.
Which is really weird because now Stafford, what HUD has done is taken the 2,000 and 10 numbers and they've applied a new formula to those 2,010 census number compared to the one they had done before. And then they go, oh, this whole town is now this percentage. It also plays with the population numbers because sometimes when we look back at census, we know these numbers are off. Or we know locally, you know, how many, just by years and you know approximately how many people are there. So probably when you look back at some of these, this might have changed a little bit. Not that it matters much, but you wonder why the numbers changed so drastically all these years. That's why.
Yeah. St. John's has moved in two different ways in a way that's gonna be harder for them to get qualified. It's not only their, but their population has popped up to 1,380 and it would have been 1,200 in the previous.
And you make a really good point because one thing they're doing with this is they're making it justify the differences now. We never used to have to write a narrative. We have to show why, you know, we, we write a narrative about the change because if we say it didn't qualify, now it does. That's one of the new requirements. It's like Faye has to go in there. It's not a big deal, but we have to write a narrative. So it's not a huge.
I don't know, in our targeted project, I can't remember, it was around 120 people we had surveyed.
Imagine doing the whole.
And to come up now with 600 is a tall order.
See, that's the other thing. If you know your populations are a certain level and they say it's more, you're still gonna, you'll either have to match 51% of their total number or you'll have to survey the whole community to prove that this is how many people are there. So now we had a small town, the census said there were 69. And when we surveyed door to door, we found 77. So the only way to prove to HUD that we had the right numbers and they were wrong was here's, here's surveys for every single household. So you can see how they play the game of you use our numbers unless you can prove us 100% wrong. Now, the flip side of that is numbers should change 2021, 2022.
We should do a get at the response campaign on.
Census is gonna be key. And we're talking to census people right now. They're visiting us going, help us find all these people. Because the census is gonna be key. And I'm, I'm not trying to be political in any way. This has nothing to do with politics. But if we add a census num, a US citizenship question to the census, it will affect some of our minority neighborhoods. Because even if they're green carded, they may not answer the citizenship question. Or they may not know how to answer the citizenship question, even though it's a no. So keep that in mind as we, because we've got to count everybody. Out in the countryside, we have got to have all these people in order to qualify for programs like this, so.
I think Faye said the numbers were up to $38,000 a person this year. It's affecting what would come into the county or cities, I guess, because this was at the mayor's conference and we had a census guy there. And for the grants you apply for and the benefits you get, stuff like that, it's $38,000 per person. So if you miss 10 people in your city, which is, you know, it affects your city, so.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So on your page here, I just have a question. On your major components of the CBG program, these are all grants for the towns that are 50%, or.
51% or low to moderate income.
Where Maxville and Stafford both, you know, met that criteria. I know, liking Stafford, I think they were, done some deals as far as.
Faye has done electrical. It's on our list, yeah. We've done two electrical upgrades over there.
Demolition of residential and commercial buildings? I know we've talked about that. So is this like a?
Demols are separate and you don't have to do LMI for demolition. So demolition's a freestanding program. It's easy. It's not easy, but the problem is you compete with these programs. So demo doesn't have the same requirements, but you're still, if they've got money, you can get demolition. So demolition is a different beast. It doesn't have quite the same requirements, but it's still a competitive round. So it's there too. And this is, is match. We often go to rural development if we need more match. So if a local community has a project, we'll sometimes pair USDA rural development with that. So we'll get 25% from the local community. We might get 25% from USDA rural development. And that counts. So there's, there's your 50% match right there.
And then I see on here it says fire trucks and ambulances. We're, we're in a county-based deal.
Your county-based fire district?
Yeah.
Then we'd have to qualify the whole county.
So would you just average the cities altogether or what?
No, we can't. We would have to survey the entire county in order to. That's the drawback. So for the county, you are currently 41% with 4,205, 4,002.05 according to them. So you'd have to have 2,200, 2,300 to get 51%. And when we get above 1,000 surveys, it's hard to do. They're really hard to do. So, so what we've done in some counties is they have separate fire districts. Or they accidentally have a rural fire district, a city fire district, or they have fire districts for some of the different towns. We're doing one right now. Who are we talking to? You remember who we're talking to? They had separate fire districts.
So unlike, if you were talking about, say if Maxville City Fire Department needed to update their truck on this program here, would it be like a loan program or would it be a 50-50 grant?
It's a grant. It's a grant program, but Maxville wouldn't, does Maxville have, are they their own fire district?
The city is, aren't they?
City is?
They have city fire over there.
They have city fire.
Cool. They qualify and yes, it's a grant. And if you had 50%, say 25% local match, 25% USDA rural development, then the state of Kansas, you're eligible for the other half grant from the state. So when you hear this word CBG grant, that's what these are. These are the CBG block, the Community Development Block Grants. That's exactly what they are. HUD gives money to the state every year. The state puts it in a competitive program and this is the competition to compete for the CBG funds. There's this community improvement arm of it, which is what you're looking at here with all these community improvement things, including fire and fire trucks, the ambulances. And there's another component called housing rehab, which is small, but it's out there on the side too. So if you go into a district, Carolyn knows about these. If you go into a district in town that needs rehab, you survey, you find the homes and then there's a rehab program available. It's hard to do. It's really hard to do.
The owner of the home has to agree to the terms of it. It really becomes their improvement. And part of the terms of that are that there is a lien placed on the property for, I believe it's a 10-year period, right? So my experience with it is that those who may have one asset they own, however run down it may appear to others, they're protective of it. And they don't come to that term easily.
Exactly as she said, what if that house turned over in ownership? Right now, we just finished one in Ashland and then right away, one of the houses wanted to be sold. It can only be sold to someone who has low to moderate income. So then the state comes in and says, if you wish, the only way we'll allow this to occur is you have to certify that the next owners are in the same category. So we've got one, we have a couple from Nebraska moving, they want to move down and buy a home in Ashland, but they have to qualify the same way the homeowners did. So she brings up a good point.
You're stuck.
If the land bank was the owner, it would be less of an issue than an actual person.
It would, would the land bank be able to?
Because you're looking to target.
You would land back would have to retain ownership throughout the entire tenure process.
We're looking for rental properties. I don't know that that would be an issue.
And you would have to make sure that the people you rent to qualify, which you don't.
But it would be an option. But you would help us determine like competitive wise? Because let's say we did the housing assessment tool and so we had housing, we have demo and we have a street project in our low-income housing that all needs complete. You would help us determine which way we'd best be likely to get funds, maybe?
We may want to try to go into your courtroom.
Okay, all right.
We may want to try.
You need to terminate me if that's.
Well, no, I mean, do you, are you on go through your report or?
Yeah, there's half that we're, there's the loan side. We haven't had a lot of activity in the last year. Sometimes we get leads and Carolyn calls and sometimes there's not a lot going on. And if your local banks are making the loans, that's all we want anyhow. So it doesn't matter if the banks are doing it. The banks are aware of all the different options available. So that's, that's not the issue. Other than that, we've got a new loan fund out there that we didn't have before that works for nonprofit profits in government. We've never had, that's the Network Kansas Community Investment Fund. It's brand new. We can actually use it for nonprofit profits as a match. There's a 15% match. And they're good for community projects like daycare, impact projects, things that are community-oriented.
They're loans.
They're loans, but it's 15%. It, it's like a gap. So somebody's, you're missing that last 15%.
But the loan, right? So you'd have, not only to borrow that money, but you'd have to be borrowing the other money that is involved in financing a project, which, yeah.
However, don't forget, we can spend each community loan into grants. If you have a good project and you've got matching grant funds, we can take each community fund, spin it into a grant. We can add startup Kansas from Network Kansas into it. So we can do a $90,000 grant toward a public project. We did it in Great Bend. We've done it like two or three times. So that's a quiet little part of it.
We've done grants to what? We, in fact, we, we hold the distinction of being the program in the state of Kansas that has most been allowed to use loan funds as a grant. So we used $45,000 in the grocery store. We used $45,000 buy the building that is the incubator building in St. John. And that's the one that too that we're.
And you can start up with it now too. We, you can pair them together and do a 90 total if network, just upwire them. That is the end of my report. I know you're running behind. I will, we always. We need membership. We always appreciate your membership if you would consider. I'll make a motion. We, you know, a membership agreement with Great Plains Development unauthorized the chairman to sign the agreement for $1,051.75.
We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Did you get all that?
No.
A membership agreement to the Great Plains Development. Authorize the chairman to sign this agreement. And the membership fee is $1,051.75.
We have a motion in a second. On the favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Run it twice.
That way you don't have to make photocopy. I'm getting better as I get older. Thank you so much. We appreciate your support. It has not changed since 2012. It's been 25 cents per capita. We appreciate that. Have you caught it, Nita?
I know you have better things to. You're busy.
Okay.
I'll make a motion and accept the minutes of April 17.
Second. If we keep one, you take one? We have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the April 17 meeting. On the favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So you get, so you get in contact with like Maxville and Stafford? You are in business.
Faye does, but we're careful to run it through economic development. I mean, Faye will make contact, but you know more about what's going on with all of them than anybody.
So Maxville does.[1731.85]